Thank you for being here, being here. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on December 12th, 2023. Our last commission meeting of the year, and I ask our city clerk to please call Rob.
Mr. Geth?
Present.
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Brad?
Present.
Now, I'll ask Commissioner Henderson to do our invocation, and we'll remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
My God and our Father, again, we are so grateful for the day that you've given us, and we're grateful for the blessings that we right now enjoy. Father, we continue to lift up this commission, this mayor to you, oh God, and we pray that you will cover us and give us, continue to give us the grace to serve this community. Father, we pray for the administrative staff, for the city employees, oh God, that you would give them the grace that they might need to move forward in the days ahead. God, we love you, and we honor you, and we thank you again, and pray that you will be pleased with all that we say and all that we do. And we pray, oh God, that in all our getting tonight, that we will indeed get an understanding. God, you be glorified as we worship the Jesus, the Christ child, in this season is our prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, City Manager, are there any deletions or additions to the agenda for tonight?
None this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. So, the first item of business is Christmas Parade Award Presentations. This is a Christmas Parade's joyous occasion for the city of Paducah, enjoyed by many of our citizens, as well as people from surrounding counties. People bring their children. It's really a fun time, and this year, a lot of our award winners for the floats kind of outdid themselves. So, I'll turn this over to Taylor and Amy. Taylor, okay. All right, you're on, Taylor.
All right. Well, first off, I'd just like to thank all the groups who participated in this year's Christmas Parade. We had about eighty-five entries. On the theme, this year was Wild Western Kentucky Christmas. The parade was held Saturday, December 2nd, and we had just under nine thousand people along the parade route, but probably another one thousand on the floats themselves. It really was a wonderful night. And today, we'd like to recognize the winners from our six categories, as voted by our three parade judges. So, most of the winners will be here with us tonight. We ask that, when you announce your name, come on up, we'll shake your hand, give you your winning check, and take a quick picture, all right? So, first one we're going to recognize was our themed float category. And the winners for this category was Drake Lighting. All right, the next category was our religious float category, and the winner was Northside Church. All right, next category was nonfloat, and the winner was Goodwin Farms. Next category is our school float, which was won by Paducah Middle School. The drill team winner was Center Stage Dance Academy.
Should have pure wadded or something.
And Taylor?
Yeah, I meant Taylor, yeah.
And lastly, in the band category, the winner was McCracken County High School Band. And they could not be here tonight because they have a performance at the school. Thank you.
So, just a couple of quick comments. We do really appreciate all the effort and work that goes into these floats, the creativity that goes into them, the planning, the investment, and the time that people put into them. It really, it makes the parade, you know, better for all of us. And I think, did you say we had eighty-five floats? So, I actually got contacted at the last minute by a couple of people who waited too late to get in. And so, next year, I think we'll kind of think ahead and make sure that we remind all of you who are in the parade this year to make sure that if you're going to be in the parade next year, that you have an opportunity, you know? So, they took full responsibility for it, but we hate to turn anybody down that really wants to be in the parades because it's so great for all of us. But at any rate, thanks to everybody, and great job, Amy and Taylor, and the entire Parks Department.
Hey, Mayor, just want to make a comment. It was great, very well organized. It was beautiful, and when you're in the parade, which the commissioners were all in, you see all these people, all these kids, and everyone's having a good time. It's really a nice thing. And I think it's, the city sponsoring the parade is one of the things a lot of people don't think about, but there is a lot of time and effort, wages, money, that goes into organizing that parade. And it is just another city service that is extended to Western Kentucky. It's not just all city residents that are enjoying it or entering their floats in. So, it's just something I think it's important to recognize that it's a service that the city provides for the entire community. So, you do a great job on it, and thank you.
And if I may add, I think it absolutely was an excellent parade. The only, I'd just like to keep it a hundred. Only downside is that the commissioners did not have candy to throw out. And I think if we were planning to run again, that may have messed up some of the floats.
I don't even want to give credence to that, I don't think, so.
We bought ours the day after Halloween.
Anyway, to Commissioner Smith's point, you know, I mean, it's, you know, Paducah is the commerce center for, you know, eight, nine, ten counties in this part of the state, and it just goes to show you the draw that we have. I mean, one of the things we like to say is on any given day, there's a hundred thousand people in Paducah, either shopping or working. And so, it kind of shows you really the draw that we have and the importance of Paducah to not only our citizens, but to all of us in Western Kentucky. Okay, next, I'm going to skip over the next thing for just a moment and invite Megan Mansfield with Bacon Farmer Workman up here to talk about the right-of-way management program. Give us an update. Thank you.
Your presentations have been made in your lifetime. You've got a lot more to go.
All right, we ready to get started?
Sure.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. BFW is pleased to present an update on the city of Paducah's street rehabilitation program. My name is Megan Mansfield, and I'm a civil engineer at BFW, and I oversee the street program for the city. We also have Sarah Hicks with us tonight, who is a staff engineer with BFW, and she's really the brains behind all the data and puts together inspections and reports. In addition to the two of us, we have nine trained personnel in the pavement condition index PCI rating system who regularly perform inspections for the city. Tonight, I want to get into really how the street rehabilitation program works and update you guys on the 2023 status. And BFW is tasked with the data collection, inventory management, and cost budgeting side of things, which includes the use of the Paver Program. And then, we also have the construction side of the house, which is the city of Paducah's Brandy Topper Curtis that manages that. And that's really the execution of the annual budget.
Hey, Megan, could I interrupt you? I apologize, but maybe just for the benefit of people who might not know, just an overview of what the program is?
Yes, yeah.
I think that would.
Okay, yeah, so the first portion, so there's really three main components of the street rehabilitation program, and that is the cost budgeting side, the data collection and inventory system that I'm talking about. And then, the city of Paducah has Brandy Topper that is managing the construction side, which is the street rehabilitation projects that you see implemented every day. And then, we have miscellaneous projects that also come out of the street budget that are really not in association directly with the street rehabilitation projects, as in they're outside of the scope. We have the patching curb replacements and general maintenance projects that come out of that. So, those are the three main components of how the city of Paducah executes the street rehabilitation budget that's set every year. Tonight, I'm going to go into item one and item two, which is the pavement condition index rating system, and then update you guys on what we found to date so far. And then, item number two, which is the construction implementation of the projects. So, for the data collection process, the program was started in 2018 by inspecting one hundred percent of the city streets, so approximately four hundred and forty-six lane miles in 2018 to obtain the pavement condition index rating. In 2022, the city began maintenance inspections to continually update the data because, as you imagine, the 2018 data is one point in time. We have to continue to update that for accuracy. And so, every year, we perform a randomized twenty percent of inspections, and that will total out to a hundred percent of updates in 2027. On the construction side of things, the city of Paducah is nearing the completion of the 2021 through 2023 two-year street rehabilitation plan. The two-year plan that is currently wrapping up in June of 2023 was developed in part through the traditional processes the city has used to select streets and also with incorporation of the PCI system that was first implemented in 2018. So, what is PCI and what is Paver? The payment condition index is a number assigned between zero and one hundred that reflects the condition of asphalt, concrete, drainage, all those characteristics of each street. There are twenty-two distress types that go into this data, so it's very technical. And the idea is that the PCI system is picking up minor deficiencies that cannot be felt, driving or otherwise may not be considered. So, the reality is, is that if you see a major street issue, then it's really too late in terms of repair types that we're going to recommend. That's a full street rehabilitation project at that point. And that's, the PCI data is, PCI rating system is really looking at those distresses well before that ever occurs. And a full rehabilitation project for the city of Paducah includes, just so you guys know, any time that you see them out there replacing a street, that's replacement of sidewalks, milling and overlay of streets, vertical realignment of curb and gutter for drainage, and improvement of ADA accessibility. So, there's quite a bit going on in any given street rehabilitation project we select. The city of Paducah's budget has traditionally ranged between one and 1.5 million over the past few years, except for in 2023, when the commission committed to additional funding, bringing the annual budget to approximately two million. The city of Paducah has traditionally spent their budget on full rehabilitation or what we define as reactive projects. As basically, they like to use that budget to go in and do full-on rehabilitation projects. As far as what is Paver? That's simply the program that we use to log the PCI data collected and is the program that maintains the city of Paducah's street condition map. Our goal is that over the time, over time, we move the program into a more preventative state where we are improving the overall number of the streets below the PCI's critical number of sixty-five. Just take that away, PCI number sixty-five and below, we are going to recommend fully street rehabilitation projects, and we really want to move into an area where we're able to recommend preventative repair alternatives such as crack filling, seal coating. Those are much lower costs, as you can imagine, and they really extend the life of your investment. And so, that is what we call smart planning, and that's where we want the city of Paducah to go. So, just, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but I wanted to show you guys today. We have piloted automated data collection for the city of Paducah for the first time in 2023. This was a big home run for us. We use the LiDAR technology that BFW has in-house to drive the streets and pick up vertical elevation data. And then, we put that into Toko dot now, and that allows for the main PCI distress type, so the top six to be detected automatically. And then, we have our engineers, like Sarah, doing inspections via the computer, which helps us out a lot in safety in terms of traffic control, that type of thing, whenever we inspect the streets. So, this is just a comparison, the next slide, of what a traditional field inspection looks like compared to a Toko dot inspection. We do go into the field if there are discrepancies in our data that we see variable, but if it's off by a few points, we've noticed Toko dot is going to be a little bit more critical on that PCI rating. That's okay, because thirty-seven or, I think that says forty-one, that's the same recommendation. So, we don't get caught up in minor deviations. It's whenever it's significant that we will enter the field for that. So, this is a glimpse of what this looks like for the city of Paducah on the GIS view. We are hoping one day that this layer moves into the public GIS database where this information's available for everybody in the public to see what condition their street is and also where it is in queue on the plan. But this is the famous red, yellow, and green. I know there's several that have seen this before. So, red indicates poor conditions, green is satisfactory, yellow is fair. So, that is right on the line of where we recommend preventative repairs versus reactive, which is the rehabilitation. So, moving into the construction side of the program, this is the 2021 through 2023 completed streets. So, you can see all of the blue streets on this map have been completed over the two years. The red and the green are in queue or on hold, and that's really due to right-of-way or design needs on those roads. So, there are action plans associated with those bottom fourth of the list there that they will either be executed by June of 2023, so the end of the budget year, or some of them could carry over in the twenty-four through twenty-six plan. So, budget versus expenditures. This is to show basically what the commission approves for the budget every year from twenty-one through twenty-three. And of course, because the budget year runs from June to June, there's still remaining funds on 2023 that will be executed for the upcoming paving season in the spring. But in 2021, we saw the program experience almost all of the budget. The two hundred thousand that's left there was mainly due to time constraints on projects. It's hard, as you can imagine, to hit just right whenever it comes to construction. And 2022, we did, and that budget was fully executed. And in 2023, we are on track to do the same. Two important things to note here, whenever we take the amount of expenditures and divide that by the total linear feet, move that into mileage because we're engineers, we like to convert things, that's about six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a mile. So, to rehab a street, it's very expensive and costly to do so, and I think that that's something to take away whenever you see a street maybe getting half a mile of work done. Well, that's why, it's a very robust system. So, 2022 and 2023 pavement inspection results. The city of Paducah maintains approximately four hundred and forty-six lane miles, so that's five directional. And each year, BFW inspects about twenty percent of those lane miles to maintain the system, as I mentioned earlier. So, that equates to about forty-six miles total that we inspect, and we have now completed, as of the end of 2023, forty percent of that data. Twenty twenty-four, we'll see another twenty percent. So, you can see where we're incrementally getting to one hundred, which then resets, and we continue that twenty percent process. So, again, the PCI of sixty-five is what we call the magic number, and that is where we want to see it go. And that, and this is the chart where you can see the green to fair. The lower part of fair generally enters a rehabilitation recommendation all the way down to gray, and then the green streets, those are our favorite. So, whenever Brandy completes a construction project, we get to turn those to green, change those back to one hundred, and that helps our overall rating for the city, which is always a great day. So, these are the 2023 pavement inspection results by mileage. So, you can see how about forty-five miles remain in green condition. This is important to note that this does include the 2018 data that we're working to update. So, this is a global picture. And each year that we chip away that twenty percent number, this graph modifies pretty significantly as our inspections are selected randomly. So, you can see here, 2022 compared to 2023, you'll notice that there is a deterioration cycle that's occurring. This is to be expected, given the amount of lane miles that are in the city of Paducah. This is common for many areas. But we wanted to bring this to your attention because as we continue to use that 2018 data as a basis, every time we go to update that, we are proving that no action leads to deterioration pretty quickly. And we're seeing that in the data through just the twenty percent that we inspect. So, you can imagine if we were to go out and do one hundred percent tomorrow, these graphs would actually be more greatly affected. So, this is the 2023 pavement inspections results by percentage. I'm a percentage person, I think it's easier to understand. This basically means forty-four percent of streets are poor to fell of the city, and then fifty-six, fifty-six percent of the streets are in the fair to good condition. So, that's as of the 2023 with forty percent of that data updated. And then, compared to 2022, this is somewhat of a takeaway. We see that the forty-four percent of the streets were poor to fell that are now forty-four, it was thirty-six. And then, on the good side of things, we went from sixty-four percent to fifty-six percent. So, obviously, our recommendation is that the more money that can go into this program, the better because what this effectively means is that the rate of deterioration exceeds the rate of improvement. So, even though we're capitalizing and fully executing the budget and turning streets to green, if you will, we're still seeing that deterioration on the back end occur at a greater rate. And so, the overall improvement of the city, the city globally speaking, goes down. So, what do we have ahead for twenty-four through 2026? And how do we select the streets? So, there's several things in play, and I think this is important to understand. For the inspection side, streets that are recently repaved, as I mentioned, are driven across and looked at to make sure that we can change that PCI to one hundred. That's a good day. The rest of the streets are selected randomly, and there is public input considered to where we will pick up a street if there's a need and the engineering department requests that. But otherwise, we do geographical randomization in terms of what twenty percent we inspect each year. So, whenever streets are chosen to be rehabilitated, quite a few things go into that process. The data from the Paver Program and the PCI data will continually be increased in terms of our reliability on that data, and we tend to make a lot of decisions with it, but that's not the only thing. So, there's several streets that have utility capital projects going on. Bridge Street was a good example of that, where that actually met the criteria for street rehabilitation. But Paducah Water had a project getting ready to occur in the right-of-way, so that street was put on hold for, I think, two years. And then, we came back and rehabbed that street afterwards so that that was the most cost-effective use of the taxpayer dollars to hold that street due to that project. So, we do coordinate with all local utilities to try to best understand what their work is ahead and make sure that we plan around that and also coordinate that. Traffic volumes in the area also affect the decision-making, although I will say that we pick up several low-volume streets also, especially in the interest of geography. So, we really like to spread the improvements, and you could see that from the 2021 through 2023 plan. And then, I will say, safety is always something that we consider. So, if a safety issue comes up, we usually act immediately. But that repair recommendation may be localized to bridge it until we can get to the street rehabilitation project. So, I think that that's important to take away, too. Upcoming action items for the street rehabilitation program as a whole, we plan, BFW will submit the 2023 annual inspection report, which will take a deep dive into the twenty percent that we did this year. And then, we will begin the 2024 inspections at the beginning of January and take those in throughout the calendar year of 2024. And we are also assisting Brandy and the city engineering department in the 2024-2026 two-year street rehabilitation plan, which, as I mentioned, will be backed by the PCI data. It's probably some carryover from twenty-one through twenty-three, and then those local impacts, mobilization, all those factors that we take into consideration also. And then, obviously, if we increase that budget, we get to do more. So, there's my plug. And that's all I have. So, if you guys have any questions, just let me know.
I have a question.
Sure.
I mean, years ago, I'm talking really years ago, the city used chip and fill. You know what I'm talking, I said still the right term, where you, basically, they tarred a road.
I'll let you get away with it.
Spread chat, spread chat over it, and that seemed to work for a long time. I'm not saying it's, everybody loved it. I'm just saying it was probably very cost-effective.
Sure.
But now, you know, we put in a cap of, I don't know, two, three inches of asphalt on an existing road, which kind of messes up the roads higher than the gutters, that sort of thing. And eventually, you have to go back in and then grade that back down, grind it back up.
Yes.
So, it just seems like, is that, is that how we do things? Is that standard? Is that, are there other methods where we could do it?
So, there's certainly a lot of science behind the order of operations. Some cities and some municipalities or school systems or that type of thing will really spend a lot of energy on the preventative side of things because, yes, we have a lot of red, but can we protect your investment on the green and yellow side at the same time? And that's something that we're looking into with the city. But right now, the budget has traditionally been totally dedicated to the full-on construction projects because of the amount compared to, the budget amount compared to the work that we have ahead. In terms of how we do a street rehabilitation project, generally, drainage is of top concern. So, we may go in an overlay if we have the opportunity, but for the most So we may go in an overlay if we have the opportunity, but for the most part, milling does occur, and we at least scratch that surface, and we're looking at positive drainage the whole time, because that's our number one culprit. So that is something that's executed on the construction side with the contractors. But I would say that that's our focus, is making sure that we can get it to drain and where you see a lot of those patching and chip and seal, that type of recommendation really is a maintenance bridge for whenever there's just, it's deteriorated paving, and it's got to come in and be fixed.
So that's on a long term?
Not ideally, no.
Okay. Good, thank you.
So the streets that are labeled as poor to fail.
Yes.
What is the total process of getting that street to the next level?
Did I understand, you said that?
Yes. So if a street is in poor to failed condition, they're basically, that means that the PCI data says you can select on any of this backlog that's red to gray and a full street rehabilitation projects recommended. So in this case, the city of Paducah sidewalks are also considered in that, and really, it's looked at right of way line to right of way line. And those street widths are very large because of onside street parking. So we look to rehabilitate any given section as much as the budget can, and we're optimizing that length compared to what other projects are also occurring. So the PCI data is given that initial list. We certainly have a lot of inside baseball knowledge on that based on the data. But we have to spread it geographically. And then there's also optimization and the mobilization. So if I'm in a subdivision and I have a main artery that's PCI thirty seven and the perpendicular streets intersecting that are forty five to fifty, well, it may not meet the eye that we would pick up the fifty, but we have an advantage that we're already mobilized there anyway. So we do somewhat umbrella those recommendations and get that whole area, just because it's more cost effective that way, usually. So a lot goes into that.
Some of, from a previous report that we had many, many years ago, probably not as many years back as the commission. But a previous report, was it not stated that some streets are determined to be rehabilitated or paved based upon the amount of traffic?
Yes, traffic volume's a factor. But I want to be careful in saying that. It's just, you know, if there's, you know, an average daily traffic of Broadway, for example, yes, that gets more attention, and you see a lot of public outreach coming in on that street. But that doesn't mean that, I remember when I was at the city, we picked up a street over on Norton Avenue, because a very sweet lady kept calling us about her church being affected, and we went over there and we got it. So I think that there are low-volume considerations that do occur, mainly because it may be geographically where we need to be, and it's the right thing to do. So we do pick those up.
So a question I have, your recommendation is that we increase the budget. I guess one of the things that the commission should know, needs to know is, how much do we need to increase the budget?
I knew you were going to ask me that.
By, by how much? And, I mean, it's clear that we can't bring all the streets up to where they need to be in one year, but we would need to have a plan. And so we need to have, I think, a multi-year plan to, to certainly not have that happen, where we go from whatever your numbers were, fifty or sixty-six to fifty-four.
Where you continue to decrease, yeah, despite your investment.
So we need to, we need to work to try to get ahead of that.
That's right.
So that's something that, that I think we'd like to have.
Yes, and we can get you the exact numbers of what we're forecasting using Paver. I will say that anything you can give through the program, I know enough to know that it's going to be used to bring that forward. So the backlog amount that we're calculating is pretty significant. If you were to take all your red to failed and move them to green to yellow, the Disney dream, I guess. But the, so that's, that's in my mind whenever you ask that question, is whatever this commission decides to increase that budget by whatever is feasible, I'm just your biggest advocate to get as much money in there as you can.
Yeah, so I think, you know, we could make it, you know, and nobody's got perfect data. But, but we could make that decision to try to do it in three years, five years, ten years, twenty years. But it, but I think our goal should be to bring our street program up to an acceptable level, certainly out of some of those bottom, bottom two categories. And I think the responsible thing for the commission to do would be to take a look at that and have a plan to do that and really try to cost it out.
Yep, we can get you that data.
And my second question is, whenever we repave a street that does not have sidewalks, and I don't know if we've done any of those recently, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure really, to be honest. But, you know, sidewalks is an issue for residents that don't have them. And we know that they're very expensive, you know, to put them in, especially if, if they've not had them before. But there are certain sections of the city, in our forefathers' infinite wisdom, or because of budgetary concerns, or whatever, that, and it could be, to your point, it could be drainage, you know, that could have affected those. But I do think we need to make sure that we're considering that in the future.
And that is something that we've looked at since the past few administrations, as far as if they're, it's, it's rare that we pick up a street that doesn't have sidewalks, but there are some that do exist. And in fact, my little cousin wrote a letter to the engineering office about getting sidewalks to Clark Elementary, so very well familiar. Whenever we look at the cost side of that, you're right, it's an endurance, especially if you were to take the yearly budget and go after new sidewalks. So there's been some initiatives to where that's a project outside of the traditional Paver budget or paving, street rehabilitation budget. I think that that's worth considering. We do look at it and see if we can get them in there. And if the street's pretty level, that's, that's an easy win. It's whenever we get into grade change that that becomes a very challenging thing.
But overall, I'm very encouraged by, you know, the systematic approach that we're taking to this and the visibility that we have to the streets, the shape that the streets, streets are in. And appreciate all the hard work that you and your staff put into it.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Anything else?
Mayor, just to follow up on your point in relationship to looking at the data and how it goes into the budget for, you know, the, the public's knowledge, you know, internally, we talked about this, and you may recall, Commission, last year, we used some of this data to increase the current budget by thirty percent in the current fiscal year of that. And that's part, to your point, that's part of our looking at the data, looking also at what other, as Megan said, what other projects are going on with our partners out in the community and to be able to allocate those. Sadly, also, historically, you know, the road fuel tax that comes in, that cities and counties share, which counties get a larger portion of, you know, it's a legislative thing we can talk about, and we do remind our, our legislators in Frankfurt that we need to, to look at addressing that. But that also is part of funds, you know, this, but to some extent, that also has limited in the past, previous commissions' ability to, to take some of that action because of that road fuel fund. Years ago, the legislature dropped the bottom on that, and it reduced the amount of money coming into cities for that work.
And just to follow up, follow up to your follow up, you know, I was with some mayors over at the pad office yesterday, and a couple of them were talking about, you know, a sidewalk grant they got out of the, I guess it's the TAP, TAP grants, state grants, and that's a funding source that we've really not gone after, at least since I've been mayor. And it's something that, that the District One office said that we should be doing. So I think we need to get a plan together to, to do that, so. Okay?
All good.
Thank you, Megan.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. So I'm going to move over here because I have an award to give. And also, we have an honored guest here tonight that I want to recognize. First of all, I want to, want to present a Duca Paducah Award to Dan Patterson. Dan is somebody I know very well. He used to be a neighbor of mine. He's currently on the, the Bartra Regional Airport Board of Directors. He served faithfully, faithfully. He is retired from Delta Airlines, and he's passionate, he lives in Lower Town, he's very passionate about Lower Town, and he's very passionate about Paducah. And so as I give this award, Dan, I want to also recognize retired Justice Bill Cunningham, who nominated you for that award, and which I think is even more of an honor than me nominating you for that award, for sure. But Justice Cunningham is a retired justice of the Kentucky Supreme Court, and he's filled many roles in Kentucky. And I'm very honored, Bill, to have you here, and I apologize for sending you to the wrong place. That's my fault. I take full responsibility. But he has served in many roles. He's been a public defender. He's been the city attorney. He's served on the judicial court. He served as a hearing officer for the Kentucky Board of Claims. He's served as a trial commissioner, and, and in two thousand and seven was elected to the Kentucky Supreme Court. Bill is an historian, and he's passionate about Western Kentucky. He lives in Lyon County, and I'm honored to have you here tonight as well, Justice. And Dan, and, and your wife, and I'm not sure, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. But thank you very much for being here, both of you. And so, Dan, I would have you come up here and, and honor you with becoming a Duca Paducah. And I'd ask Justice Cunningham and his wife to join us up here.
Can I get one with him?
Sure.
That's a long time, family friend.
Mayor Bray, I want to say, I know, I've been the city attorney for eighteen years. You don't need another speech. People will say that people here, congratulations, Dan, on your finest citizens. And also, I want to say a salute to Mayor Bray and the city council. I know what they have done to the city of Paducah. I know it's a thankless job. I've seen your job up close, and I really don't want it. You never get any praise. You only get criticism. So please, please, if you continue to have good people serve like these people do, please say something nice about us.
Thank you.
I'll try to be somewhat brief. Let me just, I have to start with saying, to be standing here with Bill Cunningham and his wife Paula is special to me. I've known, known him for years. And I guess besides Bob Johnston, between you, Bob, and Alan Rhodes, you all probably know more about history of Paducah and the Jackson Purchase and the Penaril, Penarils than just about anybody together. And to be nominated by this fellow here humbles me tremendously. One time, and Commissioner Wilson will remember him, I worked for Bob Miller, Judge Robert O. Miller in Murray, Callaway County, before I started my career with Delta. And I remember, he told me, he said, Patterson, hit your wagon to the stars, but never sell your mule. And then Johnny Cash's father told Johnny Cash, he said, don't ever get above your raisin, John. Stay, stay below your raisins. So as easy as this, I can bask in the glory of this. I'm not going to sell my mule, and I'm going to, I'm going to stay above, up below my raisin a little bit. But I just want to share this with you. Some of you've heard this story, but I think it's worth mentioning. When I was a kid, growing up in, in Princeton and Coeur d'Alene County, I did not like Paducah. The reason I didn't like Paducah is simply because Paducah Tillman beat Colwell County in football every year, except in nineteen sixty-three, we beat them twenty-one to thirteen and went on to win the state championship. But because of those little boyish thoughts, the thought of me ever living in Paducah, Kentucky, no, that, that was impossible to, to dream about. But here I am, and I've been here almost ten years now, and one of the first things I did, I love, I love history, too, just like Judge Cunningham. I went to the McCracken County Library, which is another star in Paducah's crown. It's a wonderful facility. And I checked out every history book about Paducah that I could get my hands on. I wanted to read about the flood. I wanted to know more about that and what formed Paducah and who was behind forming Paducah. I just absorbed it as fast as I could. And through that, it has given me the opportunity, I've, I've met some good people. It's given me an opportunity for them to be proud of this town and to serve it as faithfully as I could through my church, through the airport board, through the Human Rights Commission, just every aspect of being that I could. I have tried to take an active role here. The mayor is right, I am passionate about Paducah. It's a wonderful community. It's a great, it's a great place, and I am so proud to be here. And to get this blows me away. I'm so, so humbled. I thank Mayor Bray, I thank all the commissioners, I thank Chief Belair, the, the fire department, anybody that's connected to anything that makes this city go and succeed. I give you my humble thanks and appreciate, deep appreciation to each and every one of you. You do a very good job, and I'm thankful for it, and I'm proud to be a citizen of Paducah, Kentucky. Thank you so much.
We just need to adjourn now.
He may be running for city commissioner. I mean, that was, sounded a little bit like a campaign speech to me.
I was thinking mayor myself.
Okay, so we will now move to the consent agenda, unless we missed something. Well, we have a, a spot for public comments, but I know what, we do have somebody that wants to make public comments. I thought we'd wait till we get, thank you. So items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed, will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read the items recommended for approval unless a commissioner would like an item removed. I don't see that, so I asked the city clerk to please read the items recommended for approval.
Approve minutes for the November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three special call meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Receiving filed documents, reappointment of Dan Patterson, appointment of Kevin Caulfield to the Bartra Regional Airport Authority Board. Said term shall expire December thirty first, twenty twenty seven. Appointment of Jaclyn Carruthers to the Paducah McCracken County Senior Citizens Board to replace Sarah Walker, who resigned. Said term shall expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Reappointment of Sarah Bradley, Count Burchard, and Glenn Denton to the Paducah Commission and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. Said term shall expire December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Appointment of Benny Hetty to the Commissioners of Waterworks to replace William Shannon, who resigns. Said term shall expire January one, twenty twenty eight. Personnel actions, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to receive grant funds through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars for purchase of sixteen-foot enclosed trailer for use by the bomb squad of the Paducah Police Department.
Call roll.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. So now we'll move to municipal orders. We have four of them to approve tonight. And the first one is yet another contract modification to Midstates Construction for the Robert Cherry Civic Center, and I'll ask the city clerk to read it, and then we'll discuss it.
Our proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled a municipal order adopting contract modification number six to the construction contract with Midstates Construction Incorporated for the Robert Cherry Civic Center in the total amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, seventy-three dollars and thirty cents. And amount of $166,073.30 and contract extension number two of 60 days and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract modification and all documents related to same.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and City Clerk. So tonight, we have come for you for a contract modification. Hopefully, this will be our last one, in the amount of $166,073.30. This is to, we have about $13,000 of that is for owner requested items, door entry materials, things that go with the access control, as well as the parking lot lighting. The drawings changed from the original scope, and so there's some additional funding for that. And then the rest of it is for parking lot repairs, to include subgrade work, ADA parking stalls, and ramps into the building. The contract extension is really to just get us through the winter season, hopefully, but our goal is to have the parking lot, or the parking stalls, the ADA parking stalls next to the building, as well as the ramps done as soon as possible. We're just kind of anticipating for bad weather, which is why we've asked for the 60 days. We're hoping that it will not take the full 60 days. As far as progress on the Civic Center itself, internally, the interior of the building, we're still on track for December 28. Flooring is going in this week. Trench work for the lighting is going on this week, and then once those are finished, or once the flooring is finished, we'll be moving on to cleaning just the construction area. So then we'll be able to start moving in equipment, office furniture, things like that. So the building inside is nearing completion, and we don't anticipate any further delays for that. It's just the outside, the exterior work that still has to be done.
So will you go ahead and be moving in your offices?
Yes, we have talked to the contractor. As soon as we are able to, as long as we're not impacting their work on the exterior of the building, we'll be able to start moving in furniture and getting things set up. We will not be able to occupy this space until we get the ramps secured, even if that means a temporary placement if weather does turn. So, once we have the certificate of occupancy, we'll be able to actually relocate staff.
You wouldn't be able to start renting it, though, for 60 days, or?
That really depends on what we can do with ramps. If weather stays good and we can get those in, then we could, we could even potentially get a temporary certificate to allow us to do some facility rentals. Our hope is to have an open house in late January to let people come in and do a walk through, and then be able to take reservations at that time.
I think our thought, Darren and I had a conversation about this, and we were kind of targeting March 1st, you know, as when we would actually be able to, we could take reservations before then, but actually using it would be somewhere, it could be sooner, but.
As Amy mentioned, you know, part of this is because of the ADA requirements, and because it has been vacated for so long, you know, we have to follow all the guidelines of getting back in, and so we have to have that access as a government facility. But, you know, we are, you're moving as expeditiously as we can, but also following all the rules and regulations that we require anybody of the general public to follow to get a certificate of occupancy. And, you know, Amy mentioned that a large portion of this contract mod is for the external parking areas, and just to be clear, we're not talking about the full parking lot, because that will be another bid process in the fall, or in the spring, that we'll go out to redo the parking lot. This is the parking areas, the ADA accessible parking areas up next to the building on both sides, and the ramps for that.
In addition to some subgrade work that we want to go ahead and get done before the winter hits.
Yep.
So, there will be, in the ADA areas, there will be some paving there?
I mean, the. Yeah, the concrete work. So if you think about looking at the AC Mathis side of the building, standing there where the truck decided to try to make a drive-through, that we've got some parking that'll be concrete parking pad there and ADA accessibility. If you come to the larger parking lot side, the Noble Park side of that, up against the building there, you'll have some ADA parking accessibility that we'll be putting in there, and that's what this is, for the ramps of those entrances. And then we also have the ramp going into the back portion that will be the staff offices, but also the public access point to where the public can come in and make rentals, sign up for programs and all of that.
Yeah, and we're doing concrete there so that we can go ahead and do the work. If we were going to do asphalt, we would have to wait till spring, and we wouldn't be able to use the building at all. So, that was the goal, was to do concrete there so we could go ahead and get it open.
And then the last part, and I'm sorry, Amy, but the, we're also putting in a concrete pad for the dumpster to sit on, because of the weight of the trucks and things like that, so we don't just set it on back on asphalt and we have it sinking in, and so we're, part of this contract mod is to pour a concrete pad for the dumpster as well.
So, Amy, you mentioned possibly late January, but I do, whenever we're ready, I don't know if it's going to be late January or early February, but I do think we should, as soon as we're ready to allow people in, that we should reach out to any past, past people that have rented or shown interest, and try to ask them to come over and take a tour, so they can see what's, what's going on.
Definitely, we can definitely do that.
So, I mean, that's, I don't know if that's 10 people or 30 people, but it'd be good to get them over there and let them take a look at what we got.
Sure. We pulled up from past rentals to do our stakeholder meetings, so we absolutely have that information and can reach out.
Anything else? Are we good?
Okay.
I'll ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Amy. So the next, this is a big one, this is the next municipal order, is something we've been working on here for a long, long time, and it's an agreement with Communications International to approve the go-ahead for Paducah McCracken County 911 radio upgrade. So I'll let the city clerk read it, and then we can discuss.
Our proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with Communications International and the County of McCracken for the Paducah McCracken County 911 Radio Upgrade Project."
So moved.
Second. Sorry, I was asking. I guess I could ask this now. So I was just looking at the difference from what we talked about last night with the joint meeting with the county of 7.6 million, to explain that difference.
We'll go over. Go ahead. Correct. So, yes, so the, the total cost of the 10 million, 13, 43664, is an all-in pricing based on our conversations and negotiations with CI Harris. Part of that, you know, roughly just a little bit less than 8 million of that, is for what we call the backbone, the infrastructure, the towers, the equipment that our dispatchers would use, the equipment that our secondary site would use for emergency management. The remaining amount of that, a little over $2 million, is towards what we call subscriber fees. Those are what more people would know as radios, those type of things. And so, while we have a memorandum of understanding with the county to split the cost on the backbone, each entity would cover its own subscriber fees and pay that 100% of their cost. So all of ours on the city side, we would pay for ours, the county would pay for theirs on the subscriber fee portion of it. And so that's the difference. Does that answer your question for what we talked about yesterday?
Well, yes, but yesterday on the, was it 7.6 within county? I thought we were splitting.
Yes, that's, that's, that's the backbone, that's.
Right, so of the 10 million, it's not all coming to the city?
Correct, right. So we would split, so just round up, say, 8 million of, of the 10 million, just for easy numbers, would be split 50/50 with the county. The others are the subscriber fees, each, their portion, whatever that costs, it would be 100% to that entity or entities, because we do have some other entities on the system that, that do use that, and that they would have to buy their, their own subscriber fee. They would have to buy their own radio units on that.
So this is the anticipated total, but not the anticipated city amount?
Correct, yeah, yeah. This is the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The city's portion is going to be 7.7 or 7.8, it's going to be 50% of 7.7 or 7.8, whatever that number is, plus what our share is of the radios, which I think is less than the county's, if I'm not mistaken. Do we, do you know that number?
I don't.
Is it 1.?
It's.
612.
Yep.
612.
That's what's estimated, based on looking at our, what we have now and what we would need. Yep.
So that, yeah, so that means that the difference between the 7.7 and the 10.1, so you take the 612 plus the 7.7, if I'm doing my math right, I mean, that means that the county's got almost $2 million in radios that they're, that they're going to have to buy.
The county or, and/or.
And/or their subscribers.
Right, right, other subscribers, yeah.
Does that help?
Yeah, I'm looking at half of the 7.6 plus two, 612.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm sorry, I was going to say, we do have, you know, if you have any additional questions, I know you heard them answered yesterday, but we do have representatives here from CI Harris, if you had any additional questions tonight for them.
Yeah, thanks for being here, guys. Appreciate it. I think, you know, I think that we had a user group, or we had a group that, you know, really drilled down, drilled down on this a lot, and, and really asked a lot of questions. We also had a consultant, you know, that helped us through the proposal, and, and I think, at least speaking for myself, I had a lot of confidence in that user group, in asking questions, and in the consultant, you know, who we've been working with since 2016. So I really don't have a lot of questions. I mean, I'm, I'm at peace, you know, with what, with what we're spending the money on. It's five towers, it's going to be 95% coverage, you know, we're at, Lord knows where our coverage is now, you know, 60, 70%, I'm not sure.
Even less than that in certain areas.
So, at any rate, we're making a huge upgrade to 911 for the entire community, and something we've been working on since 2016. So it's, it's quite an accomplishment, you know, on the community's part to get to this point. We still have some very important discussions to take place, one of those being funding, you know, that kind of boiled up a little bit last night at the joint meeting, so we're going to have to get after that pretty quickly after the first of the year. So, we are going to have to determine funding. I think there's a, there's a thought process at this point that, you know, a parcel fee might be the best, you know, that's in discussions between myself and the county judge, and a city manager, and the deputy county judge. You know, we've got more discussions about that, and then we have to decide on what level it's going to be. And in those discussions, and that's kind of boiled up last night. We spend, we spend, I can't remember the exact, how much do we spend in operations in 911 on an annual basis?
Total budget, chief, is 2.6.
But some of that's county, right? And, right, so, so the city spends, just round numbers, city spends 1.8, county spends 800,000, give or take, you know, on operations. And so one of the decisions we have to make is, how much do we want to spend to fund the new equipment, and how much do we want to spend that's going to be a part of, to help us with operations? So that's a decision that's, that we've got to come to grips with. And I know our citizens are watching this, and so we're going to try to make the very best decisions that we can based upon the information that we have. In addition to that, we've got to make a decision about governance, governance. Currently, the, the city owns the system, and so we've governed ourselves. Now the county is going to become a 50/50 partner with us, and we've got to come up with a way to, to make sure that, you know, that we're fair to them, and that they have a say-so in the overall governance. I will say that the way operations of 911 right now, and the way it's governed, is working very well. And so, you know, we've got to come to grips with how that, how that takes place. So we really don't want to make wholesale changes to the way things are, are being run right, right now, because I think everybody would tell you that it's running extremely well. So we've got to navigate our, our way through the governance discussions and make sure we don't upset the apple cart. It's kind of the way I, the way I see it. So those are kind of the discussions that are left to be had, so. Any comments or questions from commissioners? Well, I would ask the, the city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Hallelujah. Aye.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, everybody. And then we have an additional amendment concerning federal engineering, and I would ask the city clerk to please read that.
Our proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled "A Municipal Order Authorizing and Approving Amendment Number 10 to the Professional Consulting Agreement with Federal Engineering Incorporated for Professional Services Related to the Implementation Support for the Paducah McCracken County 911 Radio Upgrade Project in an amount not to exceed $265,782, and authorizing the mayor to execute the amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Chief Laird, welcome.
Good evening, everyone, and I think we can adjourn now. First off, you know, there's been a lot said about the, that radio system. There's a lot that could be said in continuance of what you guys have done tonight. I just want to say thank you. So, Chief Kyle, it's been a long, long time to get to this point. Now we've got a lot of construction to get done. I've already talked with the guys from CI and encouraged them to, to do it as fast, as reliably as they can.
16 months, I hear.
Maybe, maybe faster. We're going to help them as much as we can to get it done as, as fast as we can, because it's that important to us. So, this, this agreement here with federal engineering is to basically continue our relationship that we have with federal. They've been our partner in this system from the very beginning. They're the ones that helped evaluate and show the need for upgrading the system. They evaluated our entire 911 center. We've accepted their recommendations up to this point, replacing the telephone system, the CAD system over the last several years, and now this is the final component of their recommendation, is the radio system. So they've been with us all along the way, but their contract has ended their services up to this point. What this does is, it allows them to work with us through the installation, the testing side, and then the final changeover of the existing system that we have now to the new system that the CI is going to put in for us. So we, the cost of that contract is about $265,000. The, the plan for paying for that is, we don't expect too much for the rest of, rest of this fiscal year, so we believe that that can come out of the 911 budget. And then, as we start the budget process for fiscal year '25, we will budget appropriately to cover the rest of that contract.
For what period of time is that 265,000?
That is through the end of the project, through 2024 and 2025.
Okay.
Until, until CI completes the project, and it's fully tested to make sure that it meets all the requirements that, that we've required in the RFP.
And is the county part of this, this, this project, or this fee?
Yeah, the way the other agreements have been ran, it's been ran through the 911 centers, and then it's billed through the 911 budget. So the county technically is a part of that because they're, they're a customer.
So the county's participating at the rate that they would participate operationally?
Yes.
Okay, which is somewhere to the, like a third, one-third.
Right. 38 to 40% typically.
It's kind of odd that it be set up that way, but. We didn't think about, you know, any, any other arrangement. I mean, we just, I mean, I'm, I'm just reacting. I mean, I didn't really anticipate, I didn't know that. I mean, I didn't really anticipate, I didn't know that.
That's the way that it's currently set up and so we were continuing on with that. That was the recommendation.
Okay. Any other, uh, questions for anybody? When we, obviously we need the support from them to get the, uh, to get the system implemented.
We do, and the principal with that company that's been helping us along the way is Travis LaPage and he was on the call yesterday, uh, in a meeting with us as well. Um, they're probably actually, uh, have expended their time, uh, and money that we've already appropriated in the last contract amendment. Um, and so I think the last couple meetings that they've done, they, they've just done just to get us through until this one is signed. So basically, we got those for free.
Okay. City clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
The last municipal order has to do with, um, a benefit plan that we need to adopt. So, the clerk, would you read it, please?
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled "A Municipal Order Approving and Adopting the City of Paducah Self-Inured Retiree Life Insurance Plan Document" and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
So moved.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners, City Manager, City Clerk. Uh, what this is, is a planned document to replace, um, what was previously provided through a commercial insurance company. Um, when we renewed our benefits, the group life insurance, they had notified us that they would no longer be able to offer the retiree life insurance that had been previously provided. So this will then basically make us self-insure this program. And the reason to continue it is we are contractually obligated both through city ordinance and to collective bargaining agreements. Uh, we have not set rates, premiums yet. We have an actuary who has, uh, provided recommendations, but those have not been formalized.
This is for past retirees?
Correct. Someone who, um, is eligible as someone who retired according to the state programs. So they met their years of service or some combination thereof, so they are offered this coverage.
So our insurance company canceled?
This line of coverage.
This line of coverage?
Mm-hmm.
And so we went out and we looked at?
We, we did. We sought other quotes and nobody else would, would offer this. It's a four thousand dollar benefit and the premium had been very reasonable, but, um, it, they've not continued to offer it.
It's a four thousand dollar death benefit, is that right?
Correct.
To current retirees?
Correct.
Okay. That were obligated by contract, did?
Yes.
We are obligated to offer.
Offer it.
Then we don't, we don't, it's not automatic. They, they have to sign up to accept.
They have to pay the premium?
They pay a portion of it, yes.
And how are we gonna set the premium?
Um, the actuaries have recommended, um, age bands for them, so basically the younger you are, the cheaper it will be. But we do, we have anyone from in their forties all the way to in their nineties and there are currently a hundred and nineteen participants in twenty twenty-three.
Anything else? I don't have any questions. Okay. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Guess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Thanks, Stephanie. Okay, we have four ordinances to adopt. The first one is, um, a text amendment on sign regulations. Uh, we had some discussion about this a couple of weeks ago. I'll ask the city clerk, please read it.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Amending Chapter One Twenty-Six Dash Seventy-Six Sign Regulations of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance accepts and adopts the recommendation of the Paducah Planning Commission dated November sixth, twenty twenty-three to amend Section One Twenty-Six Dash Seventy-Six Sign Regulations of the Paducah Zoning Ordinance. The changes are related to the permitting, project signs in the B-two downtown business zone, clarifying enforcement of sign code, revising definitions, bringing the sign code into conformity with the City of Austin, Texas versus Reagan National Advertising of Austin LLC, and creating performance standards for murals.
So moved.
So Nick is here and I think he was gonna kind of give us a quick overview. We had a lot of discussion about it, uh, so I'll turn it over to you, Nick. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission, City Manager, City Clerk. So Josh gave a pretty in-depth, uh, overview of the amendments, uh, that we are proposing. I just wanted to kind of simplify that a little bit more. Maybe it's easier for you guys to, um, digest and understand how it will, uh, impact kind of the day-to-day regulations of signs. So, uh, first is the, um, Supreme Court case of City of Austin, Texas versus, versus Reagan National, uh, Advertisement. And prior to that, there was a Supreme Court case, Reed versus Gilbert, which kind of placed sweeping regulation for signs that, um, said that municipalities had to, uh, regulate signs content neutrally. So we couldn't look at the content, we couldn't look at, uh, the language that was on the sign. We had to be place-based and, um, had to, you know, recognize the First Amendment and free speech. So this, these amendments still recognize that and still support that. These amendments provide clarification to some repetitive, um, definitions that currently exist in the regulations and also define, further define what a poll banner is. There is additional, uh, regulation on prohibited signs. So currently feather flags are something that are permissible. This is what you typically see driving down like Kinkleville. They are now going to be prohibited. We run into a lot of issues, um, in terms of compliance with those feather flags, um, and maintaining them. They oftentimes cause obstruction of right-of-way and visibility, um, and just overall sight appearance of, um, the community. Temporary signs, um, so I think there was a lot of conversation and question about temporary signs, uh, during the last meeting. Um, so temporary signs are allowed for sixty-seven days. After that sixty-seven day period, the sign has to be removed. That same sign can be placed again after a thirty-day time period. But that's a, that's a, just a clarification. Um, special events, it allows for two signs, um, and it allows for the signs to be placed sixty days in advance of the special event. And the signs need to be removed forty-eight hours after that special, that special event occurs. There is a maximum size of thirty-two square feet, so if you're doing some type of, um, you know, community event, carnival, whatever it may be, and you place a sign out, um, it needs to be removed after forty-eight hours. Election signs, um, there, it's, so it allows for one election sign, um, per issue or per candidate and, um, you can have it on one frontage. So if you have, if you live on a corner, you could have, um, those signs placed on either corner of the property. Uh, there is additional, um, guidance for religious and educational facilities and electronic messaging. We've had a lot of, uh, religious faith-based organizations approach us about converting their, um, signs to digital and so we've basically developed some, uh, performance standards for that. And so, um, if you are a church or a, um, school and you're wanting to do that conversion, the electronic sign will need to be at least a hundred and fifty feet away from a residential structure and the, um, sign will need to be reduced, uh, thirty percent fr, in the hours of nine PM to six AM, um, just so we don't run into any issue with, um, those signs creating some type of nuisance. This, the, the light projected from a electronic message sign will still have to be contained on-site, but we figure during the hours of nine PM to six AM, it's kind of an off-hour. It doesn't need to be something that's overbearing. And then we also have, uh, provided, uh, definition and guidance for murals. So it specifically is talking about murals in the historic districts and, um, complying with Hark if you're doing a new mural. Um, so Hark is specifically looking at painting unpainted surfaces and not necessarily getting into the review of the mural itself, but more so just the application of the mural onto the existing structure. It also talks about, uh, murals in the right-of-way, so we have a number of street murals, uh, we have one, I should say, in Lower Town and we're really trying to keep that in the Lower Town downtown area and talking about the review process associated with that. And so since that would be in the public right-of-way, we're classifying that as public art, um, and the review of that will go through the Creative and Cultural Council, uh, because that is their purview. The last is the projecting signs in the B-two zone, which is our downtown zone, um, downtown adjacent, I should say. Uh, so currently projecting signs aren't permissible, but we do allow them in the B-two T-zone, which is Broadway Corridor. But we have a number of businesses starting to come in on the Third and Fourth Street corridors that would like to have projecting signs and so we would like for the overall signage appearance to be consistent with the Broadway Corridor and so that's why we're proposing that amendment. The last thing is the, um, appeals process to, uh, code enforcement for signs and, um, it establishes the process of going through the Board of Adjustment if there is some type of appeals that somebody would like to request. Is there any other specific questions?
Regarding the temporary signs, uh, so there's a time period, you said they can be up sixty-seven days, right?
Correct.
Then they have to be down for, was it thirty days?
Correct.
How do, how do you track that? I mean, how do you know when a sign's been put up for sixty-seven days?
Including, um, medical reasons. Uh, we did add just the word unexcused, uh, absences, uh, to that section. So if, um, Commissioner or a mayor was out, um, on official city business, that would be an excused absence. So that is something that we've changed since the last meeting. Um, we also updated the section related to conduct unbecoming. That section basically says that city employees and officers are expected to conduct their affairs so that no disgrace or disrepute will be brought on the city government. We updated that to, um, add some additional language to clarify that an officer would only be subject to a hearing as laid out under KRS if the misconduct was in their official capacity or official duties as a commissioner or mayor. Um, so we added that and we did the same thing with the section, uh, related to city ordinances. That section set, states that an ordinance, uh, that officers must abide by all city ordinances. We, and that, uh, violation of that would be considered misconduct. We did update that to make sure that it was clear that, um, a hearing would only be held if those were, uh, if that was misconduct in official duties. Um, an example of something like that would be, um, if a, um, commissioner or a mayor were to, um, uh, have a, have a fine or a violation of some sort, uh, simply, um, paying that.
What you talked about was not picking up after your dog or?
Right. So if a.
Raking your leaves?
Yes, if a commissioner didn't, uh, rake their leaves or didn't pick up after their dog, that would not be misconduct in their official duties and would not be subject to a hearing. However, if a commissioner or a mayor decided, um, to use their position to not pay a fine for something of that nature, that would be considered misconduct. And then the city commission is the one who decides whether or not that would come to a hearing or not. So those are the changes that we've made since, uh, based on the input we got.
And correct me if I'm wrong, so the changes we made really did not alter, as I understood it in talking with attorneys, it really didn't alter the, the what, what we would be allowed to do anyway. We just clarified the language.
Right, exactly. There's no major changes that have been made since the last meeting. This is just clarification to make sure that it's easily understandable.
Um, has everybody had a chance to look at the new ordinance? Okay. Any, any thoughts, questions, concerns? Go on forward.
I still have some concern about, um, Section Two Seven Seven Six and Section Two Eight Oh Three. I'm not sure that, um, I totally agree with that. I'm not going to upset the apple cart.
What are those sections?
Section, uh, Two Eight Oh Three, City Ordinance, and Section Two Seven Seven Six, particularly, uh, conduct unbecoming. I, I guess what, what's concerning me is that, I mean, I understand that if I'm, um, raking my leaves or don't rake my leaves or, I mean, I understand that, but if I do something or say something that is, that is just out of order or unbecoming of a commissioner, uh, I think that that should be, that should be held accountable. I think we are.
You're saying Section Two Eight Oh Three?
Eight Oh Three and Seven Seven Six, City Ordinance is Eight Oh Three and, uh, conduct unbecoming is Seven Seven Six, Two Seven, Section Two Seven Seven Six. And I'm, I'm just not sure how to put all that together. Perhaps I'm misunderstanding how this reading and perhaps Lenzi can clarify that even more. I, I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't think that we should try to separate, you know, if I'm acting in an official capacity or not as opposed to who I am.
So the, the reason, um, behind that is under KRS, um, a, a hearing can only be conducted under KRS if it has to do with the official duties, if there is misconduct in, in official duties. So that's why we, we've just clarified it. We can't supersede that.
So there's no accountability if I, if I, uh, do something?
There's no, to your point.
Okay, that's what I meant.
There's no accountability based upon KRS.
Based on KRS.
Not, not based upon this. So KRS, so this, this alteration of this language does not, I mean, it does not change anything from what KRS allows us to do. This whole ethics ordinance, eh, you know, and the, the journey that we're on, the, to be official ethical city, is, really holds ourselves to a higher standard, but only to the point, only to the standard that KRS allows ourselves to hold us up to.
I understand. So, so I guess I don't disagree with us, I disagree with KRS.
It does define it as, as misconduct. So it does define it as that, but, but that is the extent to which it does.
I'm on my own, Stan.
Any other, uh, questions, thoughts?
No comment.
And again, um, you know, we are actually, uh, tomorrow, right? We're actually undergoing ethics training. Uh, we have, uh, an attorney with Kentucky League of Cities here. All the commissioners are gonna go through this, um, and we're gonna get a better understanding of what, um, of what all this means. In addition, um, we have a three-member bid, a three-member Board of Ethics and, um, and that board has only been charged with meeting in the past, uh, as needed, uh, but now the board will be required to meet at least once a year. Now, there's only three members on the board and we put a, uh, a note out, uh, to the community, uh, saying that we had an opening. And we had, uh, essentially, uh, more than, almost twenty people, uh, really apply and raise their hand and say that they wanted to be involved. So we are, um, right at the point of picking the one person out of the twenty, um, and, uh, we will, uh, approve that person at the next, uh, at our next commission meeting. And, um, and two out of those three, um, two board members will be in attendance, uh, at the training tomorrow. So just a little bit more clarification. As.
I was gonna say, in, in addition to that, we have.
I was gonna say, in addition to that, we have our department leadership that'll be going through the training as well.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote, so call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
With a little more clarification when I say yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, everybody. And we have one more ordinance to adopt, and that is the definition of project in our bond ordinance. I'll ask the city clerk to read it.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, Amending the Definition of Project in the Ordinance of the City, dated November 26, 2019, to permit the proceeds of the city's general obligation bond, Series 2020A, to be spent for costs other than, the costs of other public projects." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends the definition of project as it is used in the Series 2020A bond ordinance to reflect the updated project uses. Updated project uses include an outdoor public sports complex, new terminal facilities and improvements at Barclay Regional Airport, new facilities and equipment to be utilized by the 911 Communication Services Division of the Police Department, and one or more additional public projects deemed necessary or desirable by the Board of Commissioners.
So move. We discussed this two weeks ago. Any, any further discussion? I think we're, I think we're ready to call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
And we have one ordinance to introduce tonight. We have John Hodges with us that'll tell us a little bit about it, but first I'll ask our city clerk to read it.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Sanitary Sewer Easement Between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency for an Area Located North of Seventh Street, Undeveloped, and West of Florinor Street, Undeveloped, Owned by the City of Paducah, in Order to Connect the Treatment Chain from a Previously Constructed Diversion and Pumping Station Through the Flood Wall and Reconnecting to the Existing Affluent Piping." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute a sanitary sewer easement between the City of Paducah and Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency for, in consideration of $1 for an area located north of Seventh Street and west of Florinor Street. The permanent easement required is approximately 20,957 square feet, or .481 acres.
So I'm sorry, this is the last thing on the agenda that you had to stay here through the whole meeting, John, but-
Used to be in on the back end and stuff. It's fine.
Always the setup for your jokes. Chief Kyle, thank you for being here, too.
So, you know, commission is where sewer agencies and what we call a long-term control plan for combined sewers. When the city was built a long time ago, storm sanitary pipes were in some areas joined together because there's no treatment plant back in 1920, 1897 type scenario. EPA has, over the years, required separation treatment, some type of tasks that we need to do to address combined sewer flows into the river. We have done some separation projects in the city in the past. We did one at Wallace Park, we did one off Bridge Street. Lessons learned from that indicate if we were to try to separate all of the city, it's $300 or $400 million, which obviously kind of puts that out of reach for us. And so we're doing what we call in-treatment. I know that if you drive by our treatment plant, you'll see a big 15-million-gallon tank that we've already built. We've already, and we're finishing up a six- or seven-million-dollar project right now that we're working on to build a diversion station and a pump station. Pump station can either feed the tank where we will capture flows from like a small rain event, bring them through the treatment plant for full treatment. But we're also working on a treatment train, if you want to call it, which is not in our, in our actual treatment plant. It's a partial treatment process that we're going to be able to pump 80 million gallons a day of flow during a rain event through, through partial treatment, and then through the flood wall, and then tie back into our discharge outside the flood wall. And so this is really the third project of that phase. The tank was kind of the first project, the diversion station, and the pump station was the second project. And now we're in the third part, where we'll continue work at that location. We'll set three new, three more pumps in addition to the one pump that we've already set to give us the full 80 million gallon a day complement. It's a 56-inch force main from that pump station to the area that you see in your picture, where we're going to build another tower. It'll be a very tall area there, where you will then pump through what we call screening, and then that will hydraulically drive instead of your pump station driving the flow. Elevation drives your flow by gravity throughout, through the flood wall or underneath the flood wall, which is kind of where, close to where we're going to have, you know, Chief Kyle has his entrance into the fire training center. It's a good location to cut through the flood wall because it's high and it's not super low, so it's a smaller cut, less risk, and less time than you would have, you know, greenway trail type stuff done. And then we tie back into our original discharge because EPA and Division of Water cannot get these permits right for discharge for combined sewers. We were already permitted for that with our current outfalls, so we need to tie back into that. This is not the last project that we'd have to do here. In the future, we're going to have to do a disinfection chamber, and I've told our board many times, we're slated to be finished with all these projects by 2038, and then they'll open back up and we'll have to do more work. That's just how this goes, this is common, and not to be surprised. So the easement that you see there is for our fine screen facility, which will be something that we build, kind of above grade. And then there's actually right-of-way, old, I think it's old Seventh Street right-of-way, Florinor Street right-of-way, that we're actually putting the pipe in it. So you don't see that in there because it's really a right-of-way agreement that we would do for that, but there is piping that we'll have in those old right-of-ways. And so, working on the project, we already got our core permit turned in for cutting the flood wall, finishing up the design plans, so I would appreciate consideration for dis-easement so that we can bid the project.
Well, what you may have noticed in the drawing that John provided is, all of that work is in the fire training field, and the work is going to continue in the training field. Some of the commissioners have been on for a while. You may remember, we started an agreement to purchase a new training field. We have received that now. It's at the dead end of Tennessee Street over there, 14 acres. I just want to remind you, as John continues to expand his operation in the drill field area, we have capital projects that are, that have been completed and turned in for the budgeting process to start our process of moving off of that property into the Tennessee Street property. So I'm here just to remind you of that, as we, as he continues and we move out of that property, we're going to need funding in order to rebuild at our new location.
I have a question. So these are, these are city assets on this property, the training area. So, and if we are vacating to, for, to support the JSA, is the JSA, I mean, it seems odd that we would abandon the facility and then turn around and build a new one with city money versus the JSA compensating for the replacement of those facilities?
Yeah, well, what we've talked about with Chief Kyle, two things. Number one, this project kind of skirts all the existing training areas, which is good, so it's something that we can work out where we, and we've done this with you guys before. We're all kind of neighbors out there. And then finally, on the compensation standpoint, Chief Kyle and I have talked about for many years about the fact that we, you know, sewer agencies are going to have to compliment, going to have to compensate the city for the property at some fair value that's agreeable to both parties. And so that's never not been something that we haven't talked about now.
Didn't leave that out? I'm twisting his arm for every dollar I can get.
Yeah, he was, he's, he's, he would prefer, I think, us to, you know, to work on that.
Doesn't sound like a very good negotiation. Yeah. No, I'm not saying do anything to, it just needs to be something fair so that we're able to replace our facility.
That's right, yeah, absolutely, and we agree with that.
All right, great. Good, good, thank you.
John, your presentations are so, always so dynamic and interesting to everybody in the community.
You know, a long time ago, I was always very serious, always very serious, and I had a commissioner come up, who will be named, not be named, but she was on my board for a while, and she said, "You've got to stop being so technical all the time, you have to actually be funny, because nobody's going to care what you say." And so I've tried to improve that process a little bit, anyway, thank you.
Great job, thank you for being here, both of you, appreciate it. Okay, there's no discussion, that's, that's the only ordinance that we're introducing tonight, there's no discussion items. Any comments from the city manager?
Mayor, just to mention again, this is the only meeting that is scheduled for the month of December, so we will not have a second meeting planned, and then we will also have our offices closed for the Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. Holidays upcoming in the New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, which will be the Monday, Tuesdays of those weeks, so.
Thank you. Any comments from commissioners here?
Yes, I just wanted to commend Chris Yarborough and Public Works Department for all the love that's been shown on the South Side, looking good, so anticipating more in the coming years.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Down here?
I did.
Okay.
I have something that I wanted to talk about that's on our priorities for this, this year, the '23-'24 fiscal year, and it really carried over from the previous year about protecting key historical and cultural resources. And this is our last meeting of December. I really want us to get to this in January and, and talk about it and actually work towards some funding for it. You know, in the previous year, we hired the Rhodes Heritage Group to come in and do this study for us to provide recommendations for preserving and the stewardship of some certain key historical and cultural resources, and we had identified those with, with that group, the Rhodes Group, which was, that study was led by Paducah's native Brent Leggs, who we all know and have really gotten to appreciate very much his role in DC. But the historic assets evaluated in that assessment that we set out for him to study was the Hotel Metropolitan, Stuart Nelson Park, Oscar Cross Home, the Columbia Theater, and then later some of the South Side was added to, to make sure that we weren't doing anything that would impact anything negative, but something that we were trying to do for the positive. So this fall, the study was completed and released, and he gave us those recommendations, and some of the recommendations that he encouraged were for immediate action. And I know we're actively working with some of these. Stuart Nelson's being handled through the Sports Flex. Mayor, I know you went to New York with Ms. Betty about a grant application for the Hotel Metropolitan, which we value very much. But the Columbia Theater is one that we have talked about for a couple of years. It's been in the different stages, multi-stage phase of preservation by All Volunteer Board. I believe the city has helped with grant writing and doing some things to help them, but not really with any serious funding level. That All Volunteer Board, I think they have reached a limit where they're, they have been asking us for some particular funding to help them buy time for the future preservation of the site. And Brent Leggs' study recommended that, that we should take that action quickly to help save the facade while the building is having a lot of deterioration. I know Chris Black has been in and looked at it, and there has been identified some study for about $1.5 million to help save the facade and get that building saved so that they can continue with the, looking at what could be done with it and fundraising, which I think we would encourage them to do immediately, to try to continue to save that building and repurpose it for something else. I think the cost estimate was about $1.5 million. We had discussed in different meetings, in different ways, a three-way split with the city and county, and then their board raising a third of it as well. The city set aside funds when we did our budget for this year to have, to be able to put some funds behind our pledge and our goal of helping to preserve some of these funds. You know, it's been mentioned by the county, when they have been talking about the bonding issue, it would qualify for the bonding issue, but I'm not sure that it's going to fit in with the bond that they plan to do for the convention center. Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Bartman have both confirmed their support to me for this project. Many of us went to Hopkinsville to see the Alhambra Theater, which that community restored. While they are very different types of venues, and they're in very different states, stages of needing remediation and renovation, it's still a, the Alhambra showed us what could happen with a restored theater. I think all five of us went to see it, and Commissioner Bartman and Commissioner Jones also went with us, and Judge Clymer told me he had already been once before and had seen the Alhambra Theater. I know that there's support there, and I really would like for us to continue to push that. I just hate to see this, the Columbia, which is such an iconic theater in our historic, historic district, it's approaching a 100-year-old anniversary that they could celebrate. It's part of our culture, of who we are as a UNESCO community. I would hate to let us see it to deteriorate to the part, to the point that we can't save it. And, you know, we can look at the Kresge, which we had to pay to come down, we can look at the Catterjohn that we haven't owned, that deteriorated for so many years, that's most likely beyond repair as well, and really commit ourselves as a commission to make this happen in 2024. The longer we wait, the worse it's going to get, and the quicker that we can make a decision and ask the county to go in with us and challenge their board, the quicker they can get a contractor and get started on that part of it, and I think that we can encourage them then to continue on down the road of finishing out restoring the Columbia Theater. So that's my ask for tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. I'm not going to drill down on that discussion. There's been a lot of discussion, but I think that's a good challenge for us in the new year, and, and I'm very hopeful that the county come along with us. So, thank you for that.
One other thing, too, and just, I noticed that you have announced that you're going to be running for mayor again, so I want to also say that I'm going to run for city commission again, too, and I hope to be serving with you and these other individuals, too, so.
Wow, is this an announcement night, or?
I'm coming out, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for those comments from everybody, so it was a lively meeting, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Come in. Second. Call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.